To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda that anyone wants to propose? And seeing none, we'll move on to our public budget hearing and the proposed school district budget. Ruben, would you like to lead us in that or how would you like to do?
Yes, I've been waiting for this all day.
Good.
Um, so yeah, we're going to talk about the school district budget, but we're also going to talk a couple of other warrant articles as well. So it will be the school district budget. It will be a warrant article for a multi-year CBA for the JREA, that's Teachers Association, um, and a couple of other warrants as well, and a petition warrant article that was provided uh, the other day as well. So we'll review all of those. So the budget is built upon uh, or at least in line with a multi-year plan that we have, that the board has adopted and we review every single year, we update every single year. This plan is also developed through the lens of the strategic design that was put into place in two thousand, the end of two thousand seventeen, beginning of two thousand eighteen. And so we've been continuing to do work in that area relative to uh, or in alignment with this multi-year plan. If you, yep, in the multi-year plan, we have goals. These five, these are five areas um that we have goals in learners and learning, curriculum instruction assessment, personnel stakeholders and learning structures. And so if you want to know more about that, this is a fairly long document and involved. Um, you can go to the website under important documents and you would have to, you would be able to read through this. The agenda tonight is that we're going to look at some staffing, some students, just a little bit of data, some uh, per pupil costs. And then we'll talk about the each warrant article. And then tax implications, the details within the article, some details. And then uh, there will be board action at the end of all of this. And the school board can certainly take some comments and some community feedback as well prior to making any of their actions relative to this budget. Staffing, you can see that over the course of years, two thousand sixteen through this, this is uh, you know, several years. Just looking through that staffing is a little higher for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, most of that staffing that is higher is out of the student services line needed individuals to implement IEPs. Um, as you'll see in later slides, there's actually some reduction in some specific areas around the SAU. But uh, increases in the school needs. Enrollment has, was studied for many years, uh, COVID uh, during that timeframe did, we did have a reduction during that timeframe. Uh, we've, you know, stayed fairly stable there, a little bit lower. Uh, we're predicting for next year. Um, that could be off, range, their numbers are starting to increase again, and that's where a lot of the drop had gone. Um, we certainly have our, our largest kindergarten group in quite some time. Per pupil costs, we tend to be below the state average uh, and have been except for, I think, back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Since then, we have remained in that area. Uh, sometimes we're the lowest in the area like we were before, the year before. This one, we are a little bit higher than uh, Messinic. Uh, Keane tends to be uh, fairly flat overall. I mean, they're not flat, every always, everyone's always growing. Um, as inflation grows and, and the years go on and expenses increase. But we uh, continue to be one of the lower ones in the area per pupil. I don't anticipate that changing um, through the course of this year and talking with my fellow colleagues around this uh, region, around the state. Um, things like healthcare, for instance, costs increases. Uh, I mean, no change to anything else, many places are seeing upwards of um, you know, three quarters of a million, a million, perhaps even a million and a half dollars in increases. We're not seeing those, and you'll, we'll talk about that later, but we still have some increases in those areas. Article one, uh, this is an article that we have every single year regarding the school board. This has a little bit of a difference because we did have a school board member who uh, had resigned earlier and we have um, Nathan Flowers here who has taken that position and served and been on all of the committees and so forth. Something uh, really a great job, just actually got finished with the committee meeting that we had. The education committee was really nice. And um, so that specific position is open. So he'll be serving till the, till March. Certainly if um, you or anyone else wants to run uh, for any of, whether it be the three-year term or the one-year term, anyway, that has to be filled, that has to be elected uh, going forward. So there is a one-year term um, in Jaffrey that needs to be elected, you can see that there. So I'll read the article to choose the following school district officers. A, one moderator for a one-year term. B, one ringed school board member for a three-year term. C, one Jaffrey school board member for a three-year term. And D, one Jaffrey school board member for a one-year term. Article two, the one that we will spend the most time on, I believe, although we may spend some time on the article after this as well. Um, shall the school district vote to raise an appropriate as an operating budget? Just read it off my screen, I believe it'll be easier for me. Shall the school district raise, vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately. The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling thirty-one million, seven hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred forty-three. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be thirty-one million, nine hundred, one thousand, two hundred thirty-nine, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the school district or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty, colon thirteen, comma, ten and sixteen to take up the issue of the revised operating budget only. Uh, this requires a majority vote to pass. The school board will vote on whether it recommends it after this public hearing, when it goes into public session of and then the, you can see the estimated tax impact uh, there in parentheses on whether um, it passes or whether it does not pass. So if it passes, the increase will be thirteen, well, again, the estimated tax impact would be thirteen cents per thousand in Jaffrey, a dollar nineteen per a thousand assessment in Ringe. If it were to not pass, it would be a little bit higher um, in Jaffrey of twenty-four cents and then a dollar twenty-eight in Ringe per thousand. The operating budget warrant article does not include appropriations contained in any other warrant articles. This is a summary of the default budget. This is very similar to what we uh, present and talk about every single year. Um, it's just uh, the JR SSA CBA. We had a uh, multi-year agreement decided on last year, so those funds go in, we'll, we'll take a look at that a little bit later. Um, retiree buybacks, health insurance increases, some dental insurance increases and some teacher lane changes and then uh, student services placements and transportation as well as um, the supports needed for student services within our in-person uh, schools, like, so people who are coming to schools and are elementary schools or secondary school, not going out of district placement. Um, decreases, some of those items, some of those categories, I could say there's some decreases as well. Um, utilities was really one of the larger decreases that we had uh, in the budget this year, because we had the, you know, some significant increases over the last couple of years. And we are being reported that that will be greatly reduced. And so we were able to take off, um, I think about a hundred thousand or so out of utilities. This is just an uh, slide that says the exact same thing that the other slides said. This is, um, there are two slides, this one and the next one. This one um, looks at it from the approved operating budgets. And that is what we're proposing right here, so that last one obviously is not approved. Um, but that's the proposed budget and how it relates to previous or prior budgets that were presented during this timeframe voted on. And then the next slide shows I, the adopted, what it, everything is versus the adopted budget. So a difference between an approved budget and an adopted budget is that like, if we approve this warrant article, a warrant article, you've got your approved budget. When you approve other warrant articles alongside of it, that that money sometime, depending on the warrant article, goes into that operating budget, that becomes the adopted budget. So anything like a, if you pass a collective bargaining agreement, whatever is there, that goes into that amount right there, which of course makes it go higher. Um, the default budget is about a three point seven one percent increase. And um, the board, the board's goal was not to um, be at that default, they wanted to get below default. Um, we started off in both areas actually uh, a lot higher with, was when we looked at all the actuals of how it would be, but we were able to um, through some reduction of, of staff and also through um, some maneuver, some trading, I guess you could say, of positions. Uh, we were able to uh, get that beneath the default. And so the proposed is about a three point three percent increase over the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four adopted. Every year we show the percentage of what the budget is, personnel and everything else. And so this is a seventy-two percent personnel budget. Here are some notable changes, these are just increases. Um, salary and benefit increases for the, the, all the groups that are not within a collective bargaining agreement, basically. Um, administrative assistants, uh, people who are in facilities, uh, the superintendent, et cetera. Um, all the principals, uh, assistant principals, um, payroll, uh, any, anyone who's at the, at the front, you know, greeting people, that's, that's all within that number right there. JR SSA, which is our support staff association, that step increase would be around that one seventy-five thousand. Retiree buybacks would be this year, we have some retirees who have been here for quite some time and um, are leaving after this year and they have that buyback. Health and dental insurance increases, if you combine it all, is roughly two hundred twenty thousand uh, dollars. That number, um, we, when we talked about this earlier, this is, I have certainly slides on it in another presentation. But we're very proud of that being the increase, well, uh, as opposed to what so many are dealing with right now in a lot of the school districts. If you were to ask a lot of the school districts, even in our local region, uh, what the percentage increase of their uh, payment is going to be for health and dental insurances, it would be quite, quite a lot. Um, many were seeing sixteen, nineteen over, you know, close to quarter, you know, twenty-five percent um, increases, we saw something around that six percent increase. And again, because as we budget and as we make decisions, we think about the future and future focus, things, prices and everything always go up. These are about, these are expenses that always go up, but how fast and what the rate at which they go up is what we can try to control. Nine years ago, um, there were, there was negotiations that was very um, helpful in, in helping us to uh, keep our increases in this area, which can get a little bit out of control if, if not paid attention to. Uh, we were able to go to a consumer-driven plan. And we estimate that if we had not done that, our budget would likely look like perhaps a million higher than it currently is, you'd be starting at a different point. So kudos to the individuals, there was a board member here who was on that committee and really helping to make sure that that um, took place. And there are a lot of examples like that, but that's a very clear one in this year. Um, we're very pleased that our, our rate increase was not um, what, what many places have seen. Special ed costs continue to rise. Um, there are some things that we have done and implemented this year within the current budget that have allowed us to actually um, save money and we intend to invest further in that to um, to at least slow or uh, our out-of-district placements. Be able to possibly bring out-of-district placement learners back to our community where we believe they can get a better education and it's better for them as individuals, so that we can help integrate them back into our schools. Um, and break some patterns that um, have kind of accentuated, have, have increased really since COVID. And um, patterns that are, we want to stop a pattern from happening is basically um, what we want to do. So we do have some um, in district supports that are needed that are increased, um, made mostly in the area of paraprofessional employees, out-of-district placements. Continue to experience tuition increases. We were very, I will say that um, I'll, I'll make a note that we were very conservative with this number, this number. It, as we look down the rest of this year, could be a lot higher. Um, we are banking on the fact that some of our investments of creating some in-person uh, support and programs, especially at the elementary level, that we are going to not only not send individuals out of district, if at all possible, um, but also be able to bring one or two back in this coming year. Um, that is how we're budgeting, we're budgeting saying that the implementation, the strategies that we are putting forward, they are going to have an immediate payoff. And then transportation along, anytime you have out-of-district placements, you get transportation. And so if they go to different, if you can be fortunate in the sense that you send a variety of learners or a number of learners to the same location or at least on the same, you know, trip, you can, you know, save on a bus route or, or two. But if they're going into different directions and people need different um, sorts of supports, um, then you have to increase that transportation that goes along with that. And of course, transportation in general that is required by law also is increasing. Uh, within the staffing, there's, there's, we could go, staffing gets very confusing. And so I tried to keep it as simple as possible to the major items that changed. Basically, you have um, a set of FTEs within your default budget and um, we uh, know that we have um, very, we had and we talked about and it's in our plans again, that we are, have very specific focuses of what we want to accomplish and what we want to continue moving forward. Our number one priority was making sure that we continued universal access to pre-K. We had some grants over the last couple of years that um, provided us some uh, the ability to continue our implementation, which we were already doing prior to COVID, but we were able to um, speed that process up. We have, we were able to show some actual immediate results of uh, both literacy, early literacy and early math um, learning and comparing individuals who went to our full-day pre-K versus those individuals who came to us this year in kindergarten, who had not attended um, our pre-K, they could have attended another location or they could have been home beforehand. Um, it varies from town, which, which town you're in as to what um, that looks like. Uh, we added a uh, our restorative classroom at Jaffrey Grade School, this is a little bit of one of those elements that we added. We added it not simply for the purpose of saving money and controlling costs, that is really more of a result. We wanted to do better for our kids and our community and we knew that there um, there are different needs uh, that have arisen over the past, you know, five or more years within, that we need to take uh, better care of. And so we are adding a second to, a second restorative classroom within this budget, uh, which does have um, cost to that. We've also again offset that increase with some decrease in what we would have been putting forward as out-of-district placements. Um, math, uh, the education committee has, you know, seen and the board has seen that we are having an increase in individuals at the high school level, taking math and science and STEM in general. That makes sense because we've been pushing in that direction for a few, several years. Um, just STEM types of courses and so uh, we're encouraged by that, but um, we're, we'll be in a very tough space next year if we, if we don't have that position. That position used to exist, it was uh, removed because we had some temporary lulls in uh, what you, I guess you would say, um, class size right after COVID. And so we were able to reduce a math teacher when we restructured the schedule and did that, the, when the high school basically was able to save us a lot of money when we had that default budget, that kind of one-time shift that they made. That need we knew was going to be temporary. Um, and so we're asking, wanting that, that back and needing that back. Uh, maintenance, we need to have, we're, we need more maintenance, we have needed that. We've been holding off and trying to stay status quo. Now to offset, all of these positions have been offset by other positions. Um, we're eliminating uh, you know, SAU positions or, and trying to figure out, we will have to figure out how do we kind of disperse those duties throughout um, other areas over the next several months, we believe it can be done. Um, this one got a little too close to the schools, we didn't want to do this. But we are eliminating permanent substitute positions as they are in the budget. We will look at data with how, because we have to pay for subs. And so um, there are about three different ways substitutes are paid for and after the data is done. Um, what we're thinking is that if, for instance, at the high school or middle school where if we have substitutes that are uh, needed and we can't get substitutes, because this is, it's been difficult for most schools in the area to get substitutes. Uh, we have been fortunate um, at times and, and having our partnership with Franklin Pierce University has certainly helped us as well, especially at the elementary levels. Um, at this level, it's a little bit more difficult. And so our uh, CBA allows for our teachers to be able to substitute during times that they would have either a prep time or some sort of group planning time. And so if they do that, um, we have data as to when that happens, how often that happens. And we know that that is a, an expensive model. It's about um, double what a permanent sub would be. So if we tally up the days and so forth and how much we spend on that, that would be already encapsulated in the budget anyway. We believe we might be able to actually effectively, you know, keep some of those positions. But we're budget-wise saying, um, we don't, we don't have that data right now and we're going to, we're going to remove it from um, operation at this point in time next year.
And how many positions was that, Ruben?
Uh, that, four, four. There are other um, roles within uh, student services, because we were, we were removing money from student services based upon trend data, which we have done, we haven't done that in a couple of years because uh, we, we lost our trends with COVID. But we have been able to get back to that and so we understand that it um, we, we typically have never seen, except for again, some, some spots within around COVID. We have never seen a uh, situation uh, in the time that I've been here where we have had less than a um, quarter million dollar surplus in the area of student services. So we removed that buffer in this budget to get low, as low as we possibly could, because we know that things are challenging and things are expensive and we have to manage the budget of where, the best we can, yes.
It's important to note that a lot of the, that, that in special ed, we have uh, positions that we can't fill because of the credential requirements and the fact that there just aren't that many people
Yeah.
available to fill it. So that's part of the um, discussion we had around student services and uh, funding for positions is we can have positions, but if you can't fill them, you can't fill them.
Yep, so we, obvi, we, we, if we have to have the positions or the roles or the services that an IEP requires, we have to get them anyway. What we're saying is that um, uh, and we will do our best to make sure that we hire everyone we possibly can. It is a difficult hiring um, climate right now, especially within the area of special education. And so we will, you know, uh, it's an area that we could remove some funds from. It doesn't s, take away our obligation to our learners. And so if the needs are there, we need to still find a way to do it. Other financial decreases to be able to get us to a spot that's below default. I mean, we're, we're actively talking right now as, as the, a group right here at the school board, we're, we're looking to have a public hearing about using some unassigned fund balance retention to be able to get some items that are really needed in order for us to keep our momentum moving forward within our areas curriculum uh, with, with uh, literacy. Uh, make sure our technology and some of our facilities, resources, that we are able to have those, so that we're able to maintain um, things that we, we need to, but there are some, we're recognizing that those are, there's some other ways to be able to right now, be able to get that, those items that we can definitely use right now and not wait till next year and keep our momentum moving forward, but not put that in the budget and increase the tax rate for next year.
Could you?
Yes.
Forbes, can we get you a microphone so that people online can hear your question?
It might be nice if you get this activated.
Activated, you're, you say you say.
This is normal voice.
None of the microphones in the room are functioning to amplify in the room, it's all purely to feed into the live stream. So even anybody speaking on this microphone, you're not going to hear an amplification, it's purely for um, feed-in.
I'll speak, I'll speak, I'll speak louder.
Thank you.
I can do that, I can speak louder.
Is this on, is this on?
Yeah, that's on.
Could you please remind us what the restorative classroom is?
Sure. So the restorative classroom is the name that we gave it. Uh, basically, what we were able to do this year is we um, hired a teacher, um, a paraprofessional. And uh, we also have through some grant funds, just a, a support for the implementation of the year, those, those will go away, but the core itself will remain. And it, what we did was there are processes that take place in IEP or special ed meetings, so a special ed team will get together and they will um, determine based upon assessments, based upon um, disability, based upon, based upon a, a lot of data. Um, where the least restrictive environment is for a learner. Um, sometimes that least restrictive environment is not within the school. Um, we believe it still needs to be in the school, but so we had to create a different, or we wanted to and we did, create a different program internal to ourselves that were at Jaffrey Grade School um, for learners who experience um, who, who have, i- it's more behavioral-based, trauma-based individuals who, it's not um, like we have a a program over at Ringe Memorial School for the entire district where learners uh, may have some greater cognitive or even physical needs. Um, those often go together sometimes and so we or even physical needs. Um, those often go together sometimes. And so we have some high needs, so we have a lot more support over there for uh individuals in our district who need that support, and we don't send them out of district. Um, we have that same need, and it's a growing need. It's a growing need everywhere. Um, we're recognizing that early on and saying, no, we need to build the programming here so that we are able to keep these learners here, work with them, the word restore, help them to um not only learn their academics um and where they where they are at and to be able to grow, but to be able to help them cope, to regulate themselves and to be able to try to in reintegrate them over the course of years back into the regular, the full-time regular setting if possible. Um, so that when they're in middle school and in high school, we're not continuing to, you know, they're they're with us. They're with their 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 friends, their community. That's the most important thing as it pertains to a budget. You're not keeping the cycle of spending a hundred fifty thousand dollars this year and this year and this year for up till age twenty-two now. Um, which is of course millions of dollars for the future. Um, anytime you do send a learner into that addition placement. It's, you can, some do come back, and we have been successful in recent years of making that happen. O- often it's, it does not take place. And so um we want to try to help our learners be here if at all possible. It's an expensive model. It's saved us um easily two to three hundred thousand dollars this year already. So with an investment of about a hundred fifty, we know that um we're 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 very, I I speak very confidently that that has helped us. However, we need to have continuity of services over more grade spans. We only have um permission by the Department of Ed for a certain window, like a certain number of um grade levels and or ages. And so you have to do that and make sure you cover all of those grade levels or ages.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Make that a little bit more proven, please. That's all folks in the back broken out of the gears.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Juneau.
Um, I guess before we get too far into the public comment section or people making comments, can I just take an opportunity to kind of explain a few things real quick about it?
Sure.
Okay.
And I have a question for you. Can we move these seats forward a little bit without disrupting anything, just to make it a little easier?
I mean, it'll put people in front of the cameras, which would block you guys from view, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you don't have great shout, but.
Yeah. No, I'm I'm with you. I, yeah. So you're that's hard. Okay, so uh Juneau, yes, please.
Um, so just a reminder for everybody in the physical audience. Um, again, you do need to be microphoned up in order to be heard through the live stream. We do a live stream and a recording for people to hear after the fact if they miss. Um, everybody, whether you are online or in person, before you make a public comment, I really need your first name, your last name, and your town of residence. Um, so that we can properly uh put you into the record for the meeting minutes. Um, if you're in person, obviously, you can just raise your hand. We can provide you with a microphone. You can make your public comment. If you are online and you are interested in making a public comment, you may do so by using the hand raise feature. That should be located at the bottom of whatever screen you're using. It looks like a little hand. You press it. I see a little hand raise, and then we can try to get you acknowledged in that way as well. Um, and again, same rules apply uh for the remote audience as well.
Okay, thank you. And I guess it's back to.
If we could go to the next slide. Okay, so that's fine. So um that that was the budget and the main drivers. And prior to getting to Article Three, uh certainly I would want to be able to provide um the public with more opportunity to ask what questions they would have, but also make comments based upon um any of what they've seen or any other thoughts they have, rather than waiting to the end, if that's okay.
Yeah, good, good idea. So presumably the audience online just heard what Ruben said. Is that right? Okay. So if anybody.
Uh, David Chamberlain Jeffrey. Um, in the previous years budgets on the facilities, you have listed the uh gallonage for the LP usage and the tonnage for the biomass uh chips. In this current budget spreadsheet, I don't see that written out anywhere. Is that possible to be able to get that information at some point? Just to see what the usage compared to previous years propane and biomass.
We have it on a spreadsheet already, yeah.
I don't need it tonight. I can, you know, I can email you if, you know, if you want to send it to me by email at a later date.
Is it on?
So we, the line item budget detail should have it under facilities. Although we won't have usage history, it'll just have.
Yeah, I'm just looking for gallons. Yeah. It was, maybe I missed it in the spreadsheet, but I'm pretty much headed with below with the gallons.
We do, we do have, but we do have that information. Yeah.
Okay. And the other thing is, uh, where are we or what what do we anticipate? What have we been getting for uh energy credits for the biomass? So. I know in the past we had, you know, had gotten some significant mass dollar amount. So just curious what we continue to get for the fact that we use the biomass.
Thank you, David. Good question.
All right, I'll bring in certain. March. Um. I've been poring over the budget for hours and hours when it finally got put on line today. Um, I do have a question. You were going through items that um were increases uh other than choice. And they don't add up to what's in the default. Uh, you had two numbers on out-of-district transportation and other transportation. Fifty-eight K for out-of-district trans and forty-four K for other. The default has a hundred and sixty-six K increase for transportation, which um that's quite a difference. Also, this sheet, the numbers are wrong. I I went crazy trying to figure out why the tax rate did not make sense, and it's because in the total appropriation at the top, it includes Article Three. The five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and that's not how it's apportioned. So the tax rate at the bottom is not correct because that amount is split differently than the formula. So the tax rate's at the bottom. And the amount appropriated, well, the whole sheet's wrong. So, because they used um the budget plus fifty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five as the appropriation. So it's the budget is the only one that goes by the um worksheet. So hopefully that can be corrected because it will change the tax rate at the bottom for each town. Just a couple of overviews. Um, we just did the uh budget hearing in Ringe last night, and it was brought up that our insurance costs, health insurance costs are twenty percent of wages. Yours for teachers are at thirty percent. That when it goes up six percent a year, it's really not sustainable. And I know some years ago, when you negotiated the contract, you made changes. I think it's going to have to be looked at again because if you go out into industry, they're not paying nearly what municipalities and school districts are paying as part of uh insurance. And uh Ringe is going to have to look at it for the same reason, because the insurance rates go up between five and ten percent a year. And, you know, if the municipality or the district is paying, the bulk of it, it's it's not going to be sustainable. The in um retirement is what everybody always screams about, and that's not nearly as high. The other thing. Um, special, the student, um. This is all, you know, this can't be taken care of on this budget, obviously. Um, the student services budget, um, I'm assuming is mostly special education. Um, that means, you know, like thirty-three percent of our budget goes to less than twenty percent of the enrollment. I think that this district, you must talk to other districts, and we can't be the only one that has the same issue that I think the districts need to get together and put some money up and do a uh legal defense fund and file suit. I, the taxpayers in a school district should not be paying for other than education. And we are, obviously. Um, it's just being shifted, the responsibility has been shifted to property owners instead of somewhere else. But I know it's going to be taxpayer money, but eh, the way that money is taxed, the tax base in New Hampshire, taxpayers can't afford it. I think that there should be a class, a huge lawsuit from the school districts to say we, our people, our taxpayers can't afford this. Um, you know, the, um, I don't know if you remember a Judd Gregg when he was Senator. He had credentials in this subject forty years ago. He said, he told that I um I went to happen, just happened to catch him. And he said, at that time, the pendulum has gone so far over to catering to special needs, it has to come back to the middle to where we're giving money, extra money to bright exceptional children that are going to be the leaders of tomorrow. Um, and he's, he was right then. So, and it's even gone further uh from when it was forty years ago. So anyway, I I did review the budget. I told Charlie, people in Ringe, you know, they're just there's a lot of people that can't afford their taxes, and the, they wanted me to make a motion to reduce the budget at deliberative. So um I poured over the budget, and I do think you guys have done a good job. I just eh, you know, it's like, it's not sustainable unless we find some way to mitigate the bleeding on special education costs. Thank you.
I I think it's worth noting that the state in the past year increased the age to which we're responsible for students with severe disabilities from twenty-one to twenty-two. So the state legislature is where these decisions are being made. And that's where you have to look for.
It's, again, it's not education.
Yeah.
It's not education.
But if the services have been eliminated in other parts of the state budget, that's where the problem comes in, and they have been. You know, hospital, well.
Yeah, I, yeah.
And Rupert, I don't know how, and this doesn't directly relate to special education, but I don't know how familiar you are with the the Conval lawsuit that was um decided, right? So again, there we have another, another instance of where, uh, you know, the courts have decided that the state is not adequately funding. Uh, you know, they, we get forty-one hundred dollars a student. The court says it's, you know, seventy-nine hundred minimum, some something along those lines. And again, I think that lawsuit was brought partly because uh, you know, the school districts realize that the burden on taxpayers is unsustainable and likely unconstitutional. The courts have agreed with that. But we still get no relief. There's been, you know, no action on that. So, uh, you know, we're here today.
Um, but I think it's not just the state level. This comes from federal. Since we get reimbursed from Medicaid, which is federal, I, you know, I think that there needs to be an eye-opener. Uh, it's got to start somewhere because, and this is awful to say, but they need to decide what children, students are ever going to be able to be self-sustaining and contribute. And can we spend what, twenty million dollars on their education when it's not education? It's, you know, I think that just needs to be a wake-up call because it's more, you know. You know, it's, something has to be done. Thank you.
It's hard. It's very hard stuff to sort out. Okay, and uh, Ruben, thank you for your presentation. You went through a lot of things. As some people have mentioned, it's hard to, sometimes hard to hear in these rooms. Also, some of the things you're talking about, you know, it's that, thank you for stopping at this point so that people can ask questions.
Yeah. This. And so I'll just end that. If there are no other comments, I'll just end that um article with um since the the conversation of student service and special education was brought up. Um, I'm very proud of the work that our student service team um does to educate all of our kids. I think that is absolutely important, that it is education, that it is real teaching, that people are growing, that everyone has value. Um, I'll leave it at that, but I also understand the tax burden and um the costs, and we do have to develop different systems that are going to take that in consideration as well. And we do believe we're trying to do that within last year's budget and this year's budget, understanding what the trends are. Article Three. Shall the school district?
And you can come back to previous articles.
That's fine. Yeah. If you have something else later on down, yeah, we have more time. We'll have more opportunities. Article Three, shall the school district vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Jaffrey-Ringe Cooperative School District and the Jaffrey-Ringe Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year? You can see twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, two seventy-five, twenty-five to twenty-six, five hundred thirteen thousand, two fifty-nine, and two thousand twenty-six to twenty-seven, five hundred thousand, eight hundred thirty-six, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of that first number, five fifty-seven, two seventy-five, for the two to twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. And you can see below there what the uh increases would be in the estimated increases per town uh would be on the tax rate. Let me go to the next slide. Here are some highlights. This is just a slide. It's a little fuzzy um as I had to transfer it from.
A little fuzzy.
Yes, very fuzzy. Um, this picture the has the plans and the plan in the negotiated contract is moving from the three um A option to the one S option. It's a better plan. It isn't that much more expensive. Um, it is a common plan that uh schools are moving toward who have this type of coverage. Um, and so we, that is one item, cost item within the contract that would be moving forward. There are some other minor ones here and there. Another item that is of significance to the, that's a, that's I would say a major change within the um the CBA agreement, this, the proposed agreement is that the funding of the activities and athletics, so clubs and activities, all of that process, that matrix, it's like two or three pages within the contract, is being removed from the contract and will be done outside of that contract um in tandem and with, you know, certainly input from the Teachers Association, but it will not be within that contract anymore. Um, and that will help us with just the flexibility that we need as an entire district, and it benefits everybody. If we go to the next slide. If we go to the next slide, this is the first year of the pay scale and we have three years of that. These. Increases are. Between that four and five percent increase for these years. And um you can see where uh they are moving toward. Did these right here keep us competitive in the area? This negotiation was not putting us in a place that was going to push us, you know, further ahead. Of everyone else. We were in a good position prior to negotiations because we've had some very good negotiations and. Some of the items that I talked about beforehand have led to us being able to make quite a shift in the last decade of being the. Lowest salaried school to one that is highly competitive in the area. And so we want to maintain that. We believe this contract maintains that, but we are um sensitive to the fact that. Um, a half a million is a, is a lot. And yes, it covers a, a lot of individuals or a lot of people in that collective bargaining agreement. But it nonetheless to taxpayers is a lot and we know it goes into the budget and should default the following year. So we're, we're understanding of that and so is the teachers association and it was a very um good. Negotiation, very collaborative process. This is the first year, sorry, the second year. And then. No, that's the first, yep, thank you, second year, yep, and then the third year, we can go to, yep, that's the third year, alright. There are certainly other elements of the collective bargaining I had um. Gone through and done a fairly lengthy presentation on that before. Uh, lots of language changes that we had. And something I'm really proud of is our continuation as a district to provide paid parental leave. And to increase that, that's um, I think that's a great benefit, but it's also putting our priorities where the school district. I be, I believe should uh put those priorities in our. Our children and our staff and taking care of them in the best way we possibly can.
And in trying to continue the process of keeping our wages competitive, in particular trying to focus on. Starting wages which were very low. Uh, eight years ago, nine years. You know, we're trying to stay competitive. For a number of reasons, including so that we can get the kind of good teachers that we have currently. We feel like we've got a great crew. We'd like to keep them. We compete pretty successfully with other districts and. In this last two years, that's become very important. We were talking earlier about the special aid positions that we. Had not been able to fill. Yeah, we're doing a lot better than most districts in the area and. That, that was a priority for us in trying to negotiate this contract.
And of course, the passing of this contract is of importance. Not only just to uh. Just because of the nature of a collective bargaining contract in general, I think it's always important to. Um, when two parties have come together and negotiated and, and really worked at things to get a mutually beneficial. Document together, I think it's important for uh it to be supported, but we are also in a timeframe where the. The job market is very different than it has been in my time in education. And so it is very important that we remain competitive um within the region. Next, any, we can have any comments? I don't think I have any other slides for this one. I had a lot more and I cut them out because. Lot of language. Before we go to, well, we can do article four and then we can ask the questions. Shall the school district, if article three is defeated. Authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address article three cost items only. And so that goes along with article three. Are there any questions or comments regarding article three, the CBA? Seeing none, we can go to article five. Article five, uh, we as a finance committee had. And as a board, have had discussions around warrant articles. And so while there are some warrant articles that we have traditionally put forward. Um, we are limiting our warrant articles this year um that have cost items in them. Uh, so we will not be putting forward a facilities warrant article. We do have money still within our trust fund. And we still have to continue to do the work that we said we were going to do and we are making progress on that. Um, sometimes getting individuals to come and do the work is difficult, but we are um doing some planning and, and also reprioritizing. Which is the most important thing to do um at this time. Uh, we do have a relatively healthy. Student services or special education trust fund. We'd like to get that. We've been working on this little by little over the course of. Uh, the last three years to get it to that half a million spot um with the. Significant increases, especially uh last year. Uh, in student services and out of district placements, we feel it necessary to have enough of a buffer that if we do have. A significant out of district placement or two, it would take two typical um or moderate out of district placements. Um, if we were in a spot where we needed to pay that, we didn't have that, we would be able to use that trust fund to support our efforts there. So that's what this article is about. Article five says, shall the school district vote to raise inappropriate the sum of fifty thousand? Dollars to be placed in the expendable trust fund established in two thousand and five, known as the Special Education Contingency Fund. Created for the purpose of building a reserve for unanticipated special education costs. And there is a tax impact below for both Jaffrey, the estimated tax impact for both Jaffrey. And range. Both are the same in that respect. And you can see there what our current balance is in that fund. What we've added to it over the course of years. Two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four, uh, we chose a different, a slightly different method to do it, whereas we. Wrote the article as um if we had money left over in our, as a surplus. And so we come out of that year's budget. That is not how the finance committee and the board has chosen to. Move forward with this particular article this year. Any questions or comments regarding article five? Article six is by petition. And so article six, I'll read that one. We, the undersigned registered voters of the Jaffrey Ringe Cooperative School District, um, I believe there were thirty or so that signed this. Requested that the following article be placed on the warrant for March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Shall the Jaffrey Ringe Cooperative School District vote to sell the district-owned land located on Route two two, generally described as. Jaffrey Tax Map two forty, lot fourteen dash one and Ringe Tax Map ten, lot thirty. And more specifically described at the Cheshire County Registry of Deeds, volume thirteen oh nine, page six fifty-one. Volume thirteen forty-two, page seven twenty-two and volume thirteen fifty-eight, page five twenty-one. At public auction and to use the proceeds of the sale to defray the district budget in three equal amounts, starting with the two thousand twenty-four school year budget. The auction of property to be held on or before July one, two thousand twenty-four. This warrant article shall supersede any other warrant article regarding the disposition of the above described district property. Would the petitioner, if here, like to speak to this article?
Sure. Roberta Asa Ringe, um, property's been held for thirty some years and. The likelihood of a school being built there is slim, maybe none in our lifetime. Um, and somebody suggested, well, it's not costing the district anything to hold it. And while that may be true, it's also not on the tax rolls of the two towns and hasn't been for years. And there's probably better use for it than to lay there. Um, somebody suggested, well, we should keep it. And I go, right now, I think that uh defraying the budget is more important to the taxpayers than keeping it and I'll. Just equate it to. See, I had a gold necklace and I hadn't. Even I, it was in a drawer, you know, I mean, I knew it was there, hadn't touched it in probably fifteen years. And an oil bill, I went and sold it. It, it was time for it to be repurposed and, you know, and then that's the way I feel about the land. And I know you've been told, I couldn't believe somebody told you that you were going to lose money on it. When I took this petition around, I had three people say I'll be bidding on it and the more people that are there. The price goes up. I will be doing an amendment to this. To sell it in two pieces, two tracts of land, it'll bring more money. Um, and because they're in two different towns. The state already, you know, showed that they are considered separate properties because when the. Um, two oh two right of way was transferred to the district, it was done in two pieces. One for Jaffrey and one for Ringe, so, and they are, it's surveyed. Um, I found the survey for it. So, thank you.
Uh, the land is currently being logged right now, my understanding, is that true?
Selective cutting, yes.
What's that, uh, anticipated, anticipated revenue that's going to be generated from that and where would that be used?
Has it started?
They actually just started it, yeah, recently, you know, that we've been, it was supposed to start, gosh, a year, year and a half ago. Um, but the land, the ground was so wet that they said they had to wait and so they went out there, we, we found out. Um, so the. It's been a while since I've looked at that. It's, it's around, yeah, it was around fifty thousand is what it was, that the district was going to be able to take in as revenue would. The purpose would be because it's unanticipated revenue. Um, we could not, you know, you know, we can't overexpend our budget, so it would likely go back to taxpayers.
So I guess I, I would just like to say that uh. Seems like a reasonable question to put out there. I know there are a lot of people living in town and I know that. Partly because we did have a committee looking at that piece of land and. Trying to come up with ideas for it. And it is a unique piece of land, even though it's two pieces, but because it does join the two communities, it's. It's, it's the only one like it and the amount of money that we've heard would be available. Would represent a pretty small amount of the district's budget. So. Like I said, it's a reasonable question, but I think there's a diversity of opinions on whether it makes sense to sell that piece of land. As a resource for the future.
So I understand one of the, where one of the opinions came. And that person also stated they didn't want to see the property sold because they didn't want any houses built there. That's why you've got a low opinion of value. Um, I, you know, it's. It, it's all in the eyes of the beholder. Jaffrey's property is rural, Ringe's property is business light industry.
Are there any other comments or questions regarding article six? Alright, seeing none, we can go to the next slide. And so what you would see is that, um, if. All of these pass, you can see them broken out at, at the bottom there, the article two, if it. Were to pass, article three, article four and article five. And then I believe the top. Um, matrix right there uh is the, is if they all passed. And so you would see that if all of those articles passed, then the estimated, estimated change per thousand would be sixty-seven cents. Sixty-seven cents in Jaffrey and one sixty-two in Ringe. And then the impact of a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, right now, you know, we might. Really be needing to, uh, you know, change that to a estimated impact of a four hundred thousand dollar home. You know, or five hundred thousand because things have changed so much, but you can double that easily to know the amount. Alright, let me go to the next slide. And this right here just shows some of the change, which explains why some of the, you know, taxes are the way they are. We've gone and kind of gone back and forth between Ringe and Jaffrey as they had the larger tax impact. Uh, for years, you know, Ringe had received, had been paying more um during the last. Couple of years um that changed around. And it has more or less flip-flopped back in the other direction again. Uh, you, partly because the. Population of students in Ringe is starting to climb again, they had gone down quite a bit. Um, Charlie brought up a very good point at the last board meeting that even though. Ringe's numbers had decreased after COVID, there was a couple of years where they kept. The, uh, the, the ADM flat. And so that support, that helped the town arrange with their taxes. And then also the equalized valuation has shifted as well. So a little bit lower for Jaffrey, a little bit higher for Ringe. And so you can see that the combined percents go. About, you know, over a percentage shift in both directions.
Yeah, Ruben, one thing that's not. On here, and I don't know if we, we, we must have the information or at least the estimate that I think. It explains a lot of the, I think disparity of the tax impact between Jaffrey and Ringe, most likely, because if you look at this. You know, it's going from forty-eight fifty-one to forty-seven fifty-two, right? Then if you look at the actual tax impact between the towns, it's, you know, thirteen cents to a dollar nine.
For the. For article two.
For article two. And so when you, when we reapportion it, I'm wondering, or I'm guessing that. Part of what that difference is and the, the difference in state aid, right? Because.
The difference is.
So, you know, when we divide up the budget, and I know I've said this a few meetings, right? Let's say. You know, it's a thirty million dollar budget and, you know, so. So we split it fifty fifty, you know, equal fifteen fifteen. I think the difference that, that we see when we talk about the apportionment formula, it's going to be about fifty fifty, it kind of, again, it's usually about fifty fifty. So why is Ringe paying more? I think as I understand it, it's that the state aid that's uh. That's given to Jaffrey is usually, you know, based on past history, about two million dollars more than Ringe. So you, you know, take your thirty million and you divide it in half, but then once you apply the state aid, you give like, you know. Three billion to, to Ringe and five million to Jaffrey. So that's where we're, I'm guessing, seeing the difference. Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I'm not using actual numbers because they're not here, but that's. Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I'm not using actual numbers because they're not here, but that's. That's the real difference, so I think when the towns talk about the apportionment formula. It's, it certainly has an impact, right? But it's generally always around fifty fifty, I think where we see these differences, where I'm guessing is in the amount of state aid. Which is, again, determined by a formula. By the state, right?
All right. In our last slide, before any final public comments and. Questions is just. That on February seventh at six thirty, we will be in the Ringe Memorial School Gymnasium where we will. The first session or otherwise known as deliberative session. Are there any? Final comments, and obviously we have online individuals as well, I don't know if anyone there. Wanna speak?
Yes, Mr. Schramman.
Javvy, New Hampshire, want to ask one question on the warrant article number two and the overall budget. It's actually less than the default budget. But the tax increase is going, is going to be sixteen cents, is that covering the total cost of that warrant article? Or is that actually an increase?
Do you understand that question?
It's fire.
Could you put Warren Article Two back up? Please.
Right, I'm looking at the bottom there, it says the estimated tax impact. Will be an increase of thirteen cents, excuse me, thirteen cents per one thousand dollar assessment, but the total. Is actually less than last year.
It is still, it is still, I, I see what you're saying.
You can go to the, the, the graph there, the, the bar chart.
The bar chart, um, not that one, the next one. That, that's the one that you would look at. Two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget, which has everything in it. This. Still is higher than that, the default. You know, takes everything into consideration from the prior year. And then looks at other legal obligations. Obviously, some of those items that are in there, some, you know, makes, there's some adjustments, but like. Student services in particular, as well as transportation. Things of that nature, you know, cause those numbers to look a little different, even though the services in the sense where the, the categories are the same.
Okay, all right, if there are no more questions. From the audience or comments. I think we're ready to close the public hearing.
Well, the board at this time, if you were going to make any changes to Article Two, I don't think you can make any changes to Article. Three. You could also make changes to Article Five. So if you needed to, if you wanted to make any changes, you would need to do that in public, in this session right here. And then what will happen is we'll close the session and then the board will go into public, it's public board session to. Vote on where you stand with all of these.
Okay. So from the board members present, are there any? Any desires to make changes to any of these? Any of the five articles?
I just want people to know that. There are over eighteen hundred line items. All right, and there are a few of us who went through. Those line items who went through presentations by the department heads and principals. Relative to what's in their budget, what wasn't. We asked questions, we asked for cuts, we asked for prioritization. We went through a complete process of trying to. Reduce this budget and get it down to what was reasonable. Then we came up with a default budget, now for people who don't understand a default budget, basically a default budget says. Do everything you need to do next year, but with the money that you had the year before. And some of those things are legal requirements. I mean, we're legally required to provide transportation for out of district students. And that goes up, we have to pay the increase. So that goes into the default, so the default is much higher than what the adopted budget was last year. For that reason, and most of it is because of state requirements. And then we turn around and we said, okay, we need to get it down below default for taxpayers. Because taxpayers are gonna vote their pocketbook, they're gonna vote the default, no matter what we tell them about what do we really need. So we did, from my opinion, we, we reduced it to down below default. And we're taking a risk, there were some things that we cut out of the budget that could happen. And we would have to find money for it someplace. Right, but we're taking a risk that those things won't happen. So from my perspective, I think that the proposed budget. Is something that I want to support, I think it's been thoroughly vetted. I think people don't like the bottom line, there's nothing I can do about the bottom line because it's the result of. State requirements for default and it's also the result of apportionment and so. You know, it, it is what it is. So at this point in time, I'm saying, I, you know. I've done all I can to get the number down to where it's reasonable. So I'm, I'm gonna support that number.
Just to add on to what Charlie said, the original proposed, um, default budget was around five percent. And the proposed was higher than that, over six percent, so to get it down to what, to put the school district to get it down to what it is, is, I think is a. It's a very good, good job. Obviously, we'd like to get more and I like the feedback we got from everybody that did give it. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and I, I also would not like to make any more changes at this time, I think I'll echo, I don't wanna repeat too much, but I'll go what. Charlie and Nathan said that this was a thorough process. Where we have reduced it quite a bit already, I think the, the most important thing, I think that we. That we did, and I appreciate the, the effort that the administrators and the superintendent took, is that they, they listened to our feedback and. You know, we weren't just making cuts for the sake of making cuts, we were really looking at what the priorities of the district were. Right, because it's always hard to make cuts, right, we don't want to cut positions, however. Sometimes when we look at this and the impact on taxpayers, we need to reevaluate our priorities and make sure that we, we are delivering the best education for the students. So we looked at positions that were closest to the students, closest to our areas of highest need and where we could have the, the most impact on education. And I think that's what we have here, and then Charlie's word is, you know, reasonable, fair, I think that's what we have here. And you can go through that budget and there's not a lot of extra there, right, we're not, there's no major capital purchases planned this year. We're in a stage of re- really evaluating what our future needs are, we're not, there's not gonna be any major construction projects going on. We really are just focusing on, you know, maintaining the status quo, making sure that our teachers are supported, right? They're our most important asset here, we wanna be sure that we keep our teachers. And setting ourselves up for the future, so I, I think that's what this budget does and, you know, I wholeheartedly support this one.
Well, thank you, Chris and Charlie and Nathan. Any other comments or?
I guess I'll just add my two cents, I sit on the finance committee and on the facilities committee.
Two cent, two cents on the tax rate?
I'll contribute. And whenever somebody presents to us, an administrator presents to us. A new project, a proposed idea, something that they need. The two questions that the committees ask are, what's the impact on students, what's the impact on taxpayers? I mean, those are the two questions I, in my three years on the board, I have heard. We think about this all the time, sometimes in my sleep. What's the impact on students, what's the impact on taxpayers? We would love to be able to fund everything the administrators and the principals wanted. Because none of the requests were unreasonable. They want our students to thrive. But we're all taxpayers here, our taxes go up. We know the burden personally, and so we strive to make the cuts necessary. To make this sustainable and healthy and a thriving place to be for everybody, students and. The adults in the community. That's my two cents.
Yes, thank you, Christine. Okay, thank you all. And. With that, we're ready to, if there are no other questions or comments, and we're ready to close our public hearing.
We'll need a motion manager. Oh, oh, we can just start, actually, you can just start the public session when you want to. Exactly, that's all.
Okay, so we're gonna enter into a public session. Okay, so we've already started, we've started our process, done our pledge of allegiance, so I guess we're ready. To go right into our action items. Finalization of the warrant for the deliberative session. So. For warrant articles. Number one, you're gonna do this one at a time?
Well, we've already gone through, correct me if I'm wrong, we've already gone through in the last, at the board meeting and you voted on all of them. And there are no changes. That you've made, so I think you're fine there. These are the warrants that, you know, are gonna go on. The, I'm sorry, the articles that are gonna go on the warrant. And so then, but what we don't have is we don't have your recommendations for each of those articles. And we have six individuals here tonight, about seven, so it will be. You know, the, the values will add up to six tonight. The yes, no, I, I go for it, you know.
Needs to be four, 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 whatever it is, it is.
Point of order, they have to vote to post the articles to the warrant first. And then vote on whether they recommend. To.
Okay.
Legally, there has to be a motion to post the warrant articles to the warrant. And then you vote on your recommendation. Two votes.
That's fine, yeah, I mean, they did. It's, it's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Since we have a. A group of five. Let's do them one by one. And.
Five, five articles.
Okay, so. Let's do this by a traditional process, would someone like to make a motion? Referenced to Article Number One.
I'll make a motion to, oh, are we supposed to do what Roberta said, which is make a motion to post?
Well, you know, we. Pointed out that we approved these articles, but we have not addressed Article Number Five, so I think that Robert is right, we should do these one by one.
We can't do number one because number one. Number one, it's, it's determined by law and a state statute, and number two, we don't have names. Okay, so we can, I think we should do Articles Two through Six.
All right, then.
I would like to make a motion to recommend. Article Number Two. Appearing on the warrant.
Posted to, yes, there we go. Thank you, Christine, do we have a second? Thank you, Nathan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Are we posting or recommending?
Changing her recommendation to posting.
This, this was the recommendation that we.
Aye, aye, we're posting, aye.
Aye.
It's not what I heard in Christine's.
I, I did, are we? We are posting. And then we take another vote to recommend, I am confused about this.
Yes, we'll do two separate ones.
Okay, all right, well, then I'm gonna amend my. Motion, I make a motion that we post Warren Article Number Two to the.
Okay, Christine, thank you and. Thank you for rolling with it, Nathan, thank you. And so we're gonna do that again, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained, so that passes six zero. Who would like to take?
Motion to put Article Number Three, post it, post Article Number Three onto the warrant for deliberative session.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Nathan, and thank you, Kim. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Uh, opposed, abstained. That passes also six zero.
I will make a motion. To post Article Four. On the warrant.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor of posting Article Number Four. Or all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained. That again passes six zero. Next, Article Number. Number Five. Who would like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to that we should post Article Five on the warrant article.
Okay, thank you, Christine.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Nathan. Uh, any discussion? Is, is the Article Number Five in proper format, that would be my discussion.
Yeah, I think you're thinking of the next one. Five is just the five fifty thousand dollars to go into the special fund.
Thank you, okay. So hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained.
I don't think we vote to put a petition.
That's what I was gonna ask, we do.
What do we vote to recommend?
We can, we can. Recommend it or not, but we can't touch the wording of the petition one article. Except to. Typos, things like that, but other than that, we can't touch it.
So the next thing is we're just giving our personal recommendations? That what it is, just from my understanding?
You're recommending, if you're recommending that.
So that on the warrant article to show that.
You recommend this and the voters will be able to see what the school board. Things.
So skip one. Better two.
So. Article Number Two. Who, uh, somebody would like to make a motion on the recommendation of Article Number Two?
I'll make a motion to the school board, recommend Article Two.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kim. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, abstained. So Article Number Two is recommended by the board six to zero. Uh, Article Number Three.
I'll make a motion that we recommend the school board recommend Article Three.
Thank you, Charlie.
Second it.
Nathan, thank you. So Article Three, all those in favor of recommending Article Number Three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. That passes also six to zero. Article Number Four.
I will make a motion that we recommend Article Number Four.
Thank you, Christine.
I'll second.
And thank you, Charlie. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. That passes also six zero zero. And Article Number Five.
I'll make a motion, school board recommend Article Five.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Kim. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. That passes also six zero. Article Number Six.
I'll make a motion to school board not recommend Article Six.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Charlie, and uh thank you, Chris. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
I just, I just think about it, sorry.
I'm sorry, let's do that again.
Yeah, you have to do it again. He says, yes, you're going to have to do it again.
Okay, okay. So the the motion is to not recommend
Correct.
Article Number Number Six. All those in favor of the
Of not recommending.
Okay, and who who is our second on that? Chris.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion to not recommend Article Number Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Okay. So that motion passes six zero zero also. Okay. I would just like to personally thank everybody who has worked on this budget and this process over these many months. And uh we've had a lot of help and a lot of really sincere efforts and we know work against uh you know, daunting daunting tax bills, but uh I think we should be proud too of the work that the district is doing, so. And it's also nice to see that we're below the state average even, you know, even for the data that just came out last month and I think continuing that thing. And now we just need one more one more article, one more motion, and that's the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kim.
Second.
And Christine, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.